Mrs. Fisher.
Here.
Mr. Gayheart.
Here.
Mrs. Ingersoll.
Here.
Mr. Martel.
Here.
Mr. O'Donnell.
Here.
Mrs. Ray.
Yes.
Mr. Scarrow.
Here.
Mrs. Brokowski.
Yes.
Mr. Reed.
Here.
We do have a call, we will continue. I will note that this meeting has been known as first day statutes. I'm guessing by the audience, we don't have any live participation. Do you have anything to read in today's?
I do not.
Okay, so we'll dispense with reading that. Go to our minutes. We just have regular session from the September 28th.
I'll share my screen, sorry guys.
Any questions? All right, leave for motion approved.
I'll move to approve the minutes of the September 28th, 2020 regular sessions, school board meeting as presented.
Your second.
Second.
I'll second it.
So moved and seconded to approve the minutes, the September 28th, 2020 regular sessions, school board meeting as presented. Roll call vote please.
Mrs. Fisher.
Have a stay.
Mr. Gayheart.
Yes.
Mrs. Ingersoll.
Yes.
Mr. Martel.
Yes.
Mr. O'Donnell.
Yes.
Mrs. Ray.
Yes.
Mr. Scarrow.
Yes.
Mrs. Brokowski.
Yes.
And then move to read the student orientation. The student school board members get to do a vote. It's a, not an official vote, but it's a, um, how do we call it? Kind of like the Puerto Rico vote.
No, it's an acknowledgement.
We take it into acknowledgement, yes. But in tradition, if you are a, um, if you're not present in a meeting abstaining is a way to say, no, I don't have a vote. Because I wasn't there. So tell me, um, what's your vote?
Uh, yes. I would say.
I've done a terrible job explaining that because both you and Hannah.
I know, I thought so bad about that. I was like, no way, you just explain that. How do you learn?
It's a new.
No, no, no.
The way you learn.
All right. Motion carried. General other fund bills, Mr. Truen.
The general other fund bills this evening covers checks number 140969 through 141118. Wire transfers 283 through 322 and ACH checks number 050 through 078. The combined amount of $1,243,952.45. And there was a memo providing some additional information on several of the bills in your report pack.
I just have one other question. Does the Chromebooks, are those routine replacements?
Yeah, yeah, in fact, we're still waiting for some more.
Okay.
But those, we call them refurb it or, you know, basically replacing like third grade, sixth grade, ninth grade.
Right.
Action school, so.
Okay, I assumed what I just said earlier.
Usually we get them in July, but they're all back.
Sure, because everybody's getting them now. Okay, thank you.
Other questions, Mr. Truen? Hearing them, looking for a motion to approve.
I move to approve the general and other fund bills of October 12th, 2020. Check numbers 140969 to 141118. Wire numbers 283 to 322 and ACH check numbers 050 to 078. In the combined amount of $1,243,952.45 as presented.
Is there a second?
Second.
So moved and seconded to approve the general and other fund bills of October 12th, 2020. Checks numbered 140969 to 141118. Wire numbers 283 to 322 and ACH check number 050 to 078. In the combined amount of $1,243,952.45 as presented. Roll call.
Mrs. Fisher.
Yes.
Mr. Gayheart.
Yes.
Mrs. Ingersoll.
Yes.
Mr. Martel.
Yes.
Mr. O'Donnell.
Yes.
Mrs. Ray.
Yes.
Mr. Scarrow.
Yes.
Mrs. Brokowski.
Yes.
Mr. Reed. Well, you can vote, yes.
Oh, okay.
All right.
Motion carried.
Okay. And let's give them a question.
Okay, I'll turn the page. Okay, our contract, we're, it's been good for.
This is him, would you like to speak to the.
I do want it. I do want it. Good evening, everybody.
Hi, everyone.
Kelly Demmett from the Career in College Academy, formerly known as the Walworth County Educational Consortium Alternative High School. And just before I get started, I just wanted to thank you for coming out today to our Elkhorn to the ground. A really awesome morning and the rain held off. Like just, it's just enough to get the digger out there and start working. So, and Mr. Martel, thank you.
You're welcome.
I really appreciate it, so.
Oh, it was fun.
Yeah, it was a big day, it was a really big day. So, um, yeah, all, a lot of planning went into today and it was just really nice to see that it differed. But I'm here today to talk about something less fun. Contract. So, um, what, where we are right now in terms of our charter contract and our intergovernmental agreement is every five years, all charter schools have to update their contracts per DPI. And in 2019, we did that. And then we got federal monies for the charter school grant to expand. And as part of that, we wanted to change our name and add grades nine and 10, so it will be nine, 12. That means that we had to amend both the charter contract and the intergovernmental agreement that we took between our three districts, Elkhorn, Lake Geneva, and Williams Bay. And so that's what I, I brought you here today. And Mr. Truen was exclaiming that I brought paper to the meeting, so. In a time of COVID, I bring packets, so 40 pages, so just some leisurely reading. But, so just to explain a little bit more, um, the intergovernmental agreement is this one right here. It says amended intergovernmental cooperation agreement. And what this document does is really outlines the partnership between the three districts. It really is the nuts and bolts of operations and funding and budgeting, um, also liability, things of that nature, and in the role. So what we're looking at here is definitely your, the changes are in the name and the addition of the ninth and 10th grades. However, in the admissions section, they also talk about the lottery piece that all, um, that all charter schools have to abide by. There has to be access for students to be able to be admitted. And that if there are more students than what is on the waiting list, a lottery procedure must exist. And so that is the intergovernmental agreement. In terms of our charter contract, which is the next one, and so it does have the resolutions, which I will read. And this will be what we will discuss about adoption. But the charter contract then is the, kind of, the pieces about the school. Curricula, employment, a little more definition of the lottery procedures. And what this talks about is Elkhorn is the sole authorizer of our charters. So we are an instrumentality of the Elkhorn area school district. And within the consortium that we have school districts who take part and also have members from the. And then the lottery procedures a little more defined. The, the one piece on our charter contract that we did move, and I did want to bring your attention to this. So we did not take it out, but we did move it. To have open access to our charter school. We had to take out the piece that discussed, um, like at-risk for alternative ed learners, where it used the criteria from the Wisconsin State statute of an at-risk learner. And we couldn't put that in our admissions area. We could put that in the description of our school to help in guidance of students who may be the best fit here. We couldn't put it in the admissions area. And so we just had to move that. Other than that, it is our changing grades that we. As for the process, the governance board has already approved this for our charter school. After we talk about it here today, the intergovernmental agreement will go to Lake Geneva and Williams Bay, their school boards. Are there any questions before we look at the resolution?
My question is initially, we started, we could only increase to 11 and 12. How does it get to be allowed that much? No.
Um, it, it was, in the process of expansion and looking at having more students able to attend, we found the need within our schools, they said that often they have students somewhat waiting and feeling well, waiting until they can get in there in 11.
But I thought it was part of, not like something we decided. I thought it was something that the state had, had a requirement on. Okay, that's the impression that I have all of that. Okay, all right. Well, yeah, that makes sense.
Yeah, so now.
We had that a bit, wanted to make that change. Because I know we've talked about it a couple times, but now we've lost all of them, things are changing, so it makes sense.
And we want to be responsive to our, to the needs.
One of the school administrators and superintendents for several years. But, you know, I really wish we could engage the students earlier, waiting.
Right, right.
Till their junior year.
Yeah.
You know, one of our partners, school districts, I should say, I have kids who literally sit there and do nothing for a year and a half because they're like, oh, I just want to go to the.
Oh, really? And I thought they had, they had to kind of still hold credits under their belt to change that.
Yes, we will. We will change it to some different tracks because then they won't be able to be done in two years.
Okay, all right.
I mean, that's scary, that's more than work. Yeah. When they go programming, and so you're not able to engage like the academic and gateway to be able to.
The point is get them to where they should be and can make decisions that are positive for them. So early, they may not be ready for that.
Absolutely, so when you, you know, we, that you're.
Okay.
Yeah.
Just want to make sure.
Yeah, I understand.
You know, I've been involved for a while, you guys didn't tell me that.
I think you're, I just think you're busy right now.
Yeah, yeah.
I was gonna wait.
Okay. Oh, good.
So with 150 students, is there a certain number that's allowed for Elkhorn students before a post-lottery?
Can I know what that is? There is. Traditionally, uh, the other school districts have somewhat kept, I don't know if it's a cap, but just an idea of how many seats that they want there after budgeting purposes or. The difference with Elkhorn is with open enrollment, there, there is no. And so while some of the other schools may say, no, we've reached our cap with students with special needs or something like that, then it would be our process to say, well, well, Elkhorn does have. And we couldn't get you with a seat through Elkhorn. And so that's why Elkhorn has many more seats because then they accept.
I forgot the number of open enrollment that we got.
Ah, 18.
18. And another one today. 19.
So 19 of our, how many from Elkhorn?
Forty-seven.
So it's almost.
And there are other, you know, they're moving from all of Walworth.
We haven't gotten to the point where we've ever approached like our max capacity. So that may be a conversation with our consortium schools if we get to max capacity at some point.
I'm just thinking with, adding these grades and. I knew that, though, like.
I do, and it's get to be flexible throughout the year, yeah.
I think that's.
Would we, if we got to 150, would we be looking, or even right now, are we looking at increasing staff?
Um, not, not at this point. We do have the, um, we do have, we built into our model right now that a staff member will be added to help facilitate avid and also the college courses. Because one of the benefits that we have is your teaching at college or almost walking alongside you.
Right.
Checking up with your college professor, working with you and the student, like, hey, you have that exam this week. Take your stuff home, let's look at it. So having that person will help manage the number of students who will be taking more advanced college courses.
Where do we house that person?
It will be at the CCA.
Okay.
And so, yeah, so we do have a room there.
Okay. Because I was just.
Yeah, it's small, it's a hallway, but we're repurposing the computer lab because now everyone has Chromebooks.
Okay.
We don't have the need for 16 desktops.
Sure.
But it could be a multi-purpose space where students are coming in and out of their gateway.
Were those desktops? When you've been, that's what I thought.
Yeah. All, all of the desktops came from Gateway.
Okay.
Do we have rooms to grow, you guys? You have 150.
Past that, no, we would have to start engaging, perhaps rooms in the north of the health building if we, if we expanded past. But then, you know, potentially maybe we look at like other campuses and how, um, how needs in Burlington, the I-. Because different programs operate at different campuses. Uh, one benefit that we have this year is we have a middle section of the day because cosmetology. We have a one-year sequence of cosmetology. Now, they've never allowed cosmetology in Elkhorn. So for us to be able to contract that class and offer it in our building has been, you know. They're really thinking about like how to fit the needs that we have, right? Just.
I think we get those, those numbers. Gateway does have a certain dollar amount on a yearly basis that they can apply to projects. Dr. Albright has expressed that he'd be willing to add additional spaces. They did the same, the I- number for the middle school, um, that's over. Is that a scene that's up in there? Yeah. Um, yeah, so I think there's some possibilities there. And even at 150, the way we locate kids, 75 kids at most at a time on campus. They're worried amongst the last 12.
Could we start with grades nine and 10 this year? Of course, that's hard actually.
Starting that just here. It's starting. So we don't constantly have the ninth and 10th. We, no, we don't have.
But that'll give, that'll also, that would keep everybody who's this, it'll give us time for our professors to work with the students and find the ones that.
So we have 47 students now just in grades 11 and 12. Adding that ninth and 10th grade potentially. We do, we do have some 10th graders starting. Oh, yeah. We do have some younger students starting that are, have more of their day at Gateway. And they are in, I'm gonna say, dedicated to, to a presidential by the time they graduate. More of their classes are at Gateway and then they take them forward. So they are a piece of. Credit the.
Oh.
So. Do we have other? For the.
What?
No, that's good, that's good. No, so I get excited. Um, the resolution. Make it just, uh, would you like me to read them or no?
I think we just seen a motion to approve the.
Yeah, so it will give, uh, approve them and the contract, the CCA go free and then, um, you know, those resolutions. And then we just execute it with a signature board president.
Any more questions? Yes, I look for that motion.
I move to approve the updated charter school contract and to change the name of the school to the Career in College Academy.
There's a move and seconded to approve the updated charter school contract and to change the name of the school to the Career in College Academy as presented. Roll call vote please.
Mrs. Fisher.
Yes.
Mr. Gayheart.
Yes.
Mrs. Ingersoll.
Yes.
Mr. Martel.
Yes.
Mr. O'Donnell.
Yes.
Mrs. Ray.
Yes.
Mr. Scarrow.
Yes.
Mrs. Brokowski.
Yes.
Uh, Mr. Reed.
Yes.
Motion carried. All right.
Thank you.
Thank you very much. Thank you.
Students, uh, for important discussion items, students.
So over at high school, the virtual. A gross cost of $3,000 in by last week. Um, with the blessing of the team of the week by.
I love that.
Members for the Gateway. And 817 EHF students saved $367,000 by enrolling in this program. Um, at the middle school, the National Junior Elder Society, Director and Student Council are all having meetings this week. Um, and then today was the last day of their cross-country season. Um, at Tivis, the Tivis PTA just purchased a gagaball kit for the, or wait, gagaball kit for the kids use at recess. Um, and then instead of their annual trick-or-treat event, they are making Halloween take-home treat bags so the kids can still get some candy despite not having that event. Um, at Jackson, on October 21st, they're having Unity Day. So the kids will wear orange to show that they stand together against bullying and are united for kindness, acceptance, and inclusion. The kindergarteners did their first surprise at Gateway unit, this is the structure and function. And they attempted to use their engineering skills to see who could build a television. Really cute pictures in their Facebook. Oh, at, um, Westside, Westside PTA is doing passive fundraising through, um, marketing piglets of purity. Um, and then they've been enjoying the last days of the nice weather by having music class outside. And then over at the option, they've gone on some field trips such as, um, Three Meadows Farm. And then Safari Lake Geneva during the blended learning day, and they even having fun outside with volcanoes and exploring. And the four case. Garden, second stone.
It's a director's report, Trudier.
Yes, my name's Chris Trudier, I'm the Director of Schoolwork Opportunities. First, before we call my presentation, I just want to thank the board for this opportunity. Um, I really think it was probably more Jason getting sick of me coming back and saying, this district's doing this, this district's doing this. So now he tells me to go and do it. But in the passion, um, I do want to say one thing. The Gateway transcribed credits, uh, Elkhorn Elementary School did have the highest in the entire Gateway area. So it was tough to be quite proud as a district. All right, I was about to go to the next one, Jason. So I just kind of wanted to give an overview of kind of like the, the three areas that, you know, when I first read the job description, obviously I had to kind of determine my path a little bit and see where it would go. And one of the things that I did is I reached out to people who were in similar positions. Kind of just pick their brain and said, you know, what was really kind of your high leverage areas? And, um, so I did discover pretty quick that the Elkhorn youth build was a pretty big part of my job, more than I read in the job description. So that's been a really great experience. You know, I started my career out at Locking Custer, which doesn't exist anymore. Um, and then I went and was part of a program for adverse music field for Trevor. So kind of connecting back to my roots and having this opportunity to really get hands-on with the, the youth build kids and other kids in that building right now, which obviously is being rebranded currently, has been really rewarding, just watching those kids and, you know, they were, little side note, we went to, we went over to Stemmons Builders for a site visit. And there were two youth apprenticeships working, who were youth apprenticeships, I should say, working on the job. So that was pretty rewarding. Then we went to Precision last Friday. Those kids have never been on a manufacturing floor, let alone one that's somewhat advanced. And there was one kid, so cute, just walking around. I just kept saying, this is the coolest thing I've ever seen. And actually, we have a kid who we're scheduling a meeting to possibly be a youth apprenticeship over there this week. So it's pretty, pretty cool stuff. Um, so youth build, Kelly, Mr. Demerath, talk about that. Marketing branding, obviously the options in the CCA, Elkhorn Youth Build options, I'll get into that a little bit more. It's quite busy, so they kind of nicely told me to stay away. They're really nice. And then, and then I think just coming back to what all of us believe in here, that's the redefining readiness. So just kind of give an overview of the youth build planning team. So, um, there's four or five of us on that team and we, you know, there, you, you start this large federal grant where you're gonna build a house. And then COVID hit. And when you look back, Mrs. Demerath would say, you know, I didn't know we had an opportunity to do a planning year. So we're kind of planning as we go. So it's really been kind of a building a plan as we fly it and getting through it. And it's been a really rewarding experience. And personally, I prefer that. But, um, so part of my role is really to do academic career planning for our youth build students. Because, um, you know, 40% of, the grant says 40% of their skills and experiences should be on the bill. The other 60 are really those three kind of pillars, that academic life and that career portion. And then all of us work collectively on that. And, um, so I've been spending a lot of time with the career skill development. So really just doing academic career planning, looking at how do you do a complete academic career planning portfolio for these kids? When they walk out, they're really ready to hit the ground running. You know, we're also dovetailing in some, you know, like personal financial literacy and having just those really good, rich things that every kid needs before they embark on the next phase of their life. Employer visits, as I mentioned, um, uh, Jenny Quill at Wusita's been amazing. And they've been an unbelievable partner. Uh, so we've been working, I've been working closely with her to set up these, uh, site visits. Really looking to kind of leverage a business partner advisory group. So if anybody here would like to join that, we would love that. Or you know people who would or just want to sit on it. And then really the why is just to, A, kind of get the word out on it, talk about it. And also when things come up, just to kind of just leverage kind of from a timely basis, uh, the opportunities for kids. So, and I, you know, really kind of coaching and guiding us through. So if you know anybody, just email me, please. Um, cohort one follow-up, that'll be our first group, that's a responsibility that, in the grant, the job developer has, that's me. So just calling those kids and making sure that, that they're taking, fulfilling their responsibilities. Um, obviously it's a different cohort because they really never got on the build and, you know, COVID hit. And so for cohort one, just reaching out, calling the kids, making sure that they're, they're fulfilling their responsibilities. And we have to do that for a year, that's where I was going with them. So they're in the bill for six months and then the follow-up for a year. And then everyone's starting cohort three identification recruitment.
Could you, you share like your responsibilities, Chris? Because I hate that follow-up.
Yeah.
What a unique portion where.
It is, yeah.
You spend a year continuing to work with them.
Yeah, so, so making cold calls last week. Who are you? Um, so calling one, one, one young man that is actually in boot camp in California. So just calling him and just, you know, they, we want, we want to make sure that they're placed in a viable job or they're enrolled in education, some post-secondary education. Um, so that, that's one. Two, providing support and maybe connections for them. So I was on the phone with a young lady who's in Minneapolis. She's, um, looking to go get her CNA. So I assist her with making those connections with a local university up there, you know, call an advisor. Oh, and then. Oh, and then, and then as long as they stay within that process, then they, they get reimbursed at the end, it's part of the youth build contract and grant. So just making sure they're, they're keeping up with those types of responsibilities and we're keeping them in that viable, um, pathway, in their career pathway and into, uh, a post-secondary place. Does that make sense? Next slide, Jason. Kind of marketing branding, as I said, options like were full, we go, I talked to them, we, we started that dialogue. And then for the CCA, Career College Academy, you know, I, we created social media accounts, we've connected with, uh, an educate possible stakeholders, you know, just getting the word out. I mean, you get this amazing opportunity right in our backyard with this group for youth build and talking to people like, what is it? That's us, really, you know, it's too bad, you know, part of it being nice when we built it here in Elkhorn where we can really showcase it, but, you know, that, that, we had to follow the requirements of the grant, so that's part of it. Working the scheduled Donovan group video development back, they're, they were supposed to come this week, wasn't it, or last week, I forgot whether they're coming back. We contracted them as a district to do videos. Work with, uh, the teams, kind of rebrand it from an alternative school to Career College Academy. Our development flyers to push out, remodeling the website, kind of from an information to a recruitment and a recruitment and marketing and branding side, you know, sort of just pushing out a bunch of information, working on that. Reading out, reaching out the local district leaders and then just developing partnerships, so a lot of phone calls and contacts and. And then I think the last, the last piece is, you know, the redefining ready and, and that, the, the good news about that for all of us is from the begin, from pre-K all the way up, there's a ton of great stuff going on in our district. And now how can we repackage that so it's one message? And one of the, one of the things that, when I, when I see that up here, um, I, I immediately watched when I was typing this up, moving from college and career to future ready for all. Because part of what I think most districts, most communities, we're still having this and or or conversation, right? Well, you know, why are you taking dual credit or AP? Well, because I'm going to a college universe. Well, why should I do a career-based learning experience and get involved in, you know, doing a, a youth apprenticeship? Well, I'm going, I'm going into a certain career. We have to start really coming back to what do we see as a graduate profile for all kids? And how do we make sure all those kids have a stackable credential? So when they make the decision, as Mr. Martel and I were talking today, you know, their goal isn't, I'm going into, I'm going to UW Madison. That's a great goal, but what's the purpose, right? I'm going to UW Madison for, and when they get there, that they have stackable credentials, like industry certification, they're going into the healthcare field, they have a CNA, they've done a CTSO, a pre-technical student organization like well. They've shop shadow, they've maybe done a youth apprenticeship. You know, really making sure all kids have those because it's good for all. Whether you're going to be a teacher, um, you know, whether you go into machining, you're stepping on the job floor at Prop Shaft, what sort of experiences do you need? So I thought I was, I'll keep going on that theme, I was meeting with, um, oh, I forgot their names. They, they, they're out of Milwaukee receipt, the city of Milwaukee received in, uh, Kenosha, Big Step. They partnered with unions to help support kids to get into the trades. And, um, I watched a, a career panel, um, various, they do them every week and every union leader in those trades, the first thing they brought up is make sure you have a sixteen on your ACT. Because that's an entry line, so that, that's a stackable credential that we could say do well, your ACT is good, it opens up doors, just like we can say it's good to, you know, get an industry certification for basic learning. Um, I, I gave you a hyperlink, you can take a look at this, this is a Pewalki model. Kind of researching, kind of coming back to that future ready for all is what is the graduate, what do we want a graduate here in our community to look like? Instead of, you know, and, career and college or, or college or whatever it may be, what's it just a graduate from Elkhorn? And I found this when Jason turned me on to Pewalkies, I, I liked, there's some other ones out there. I'm just kind of starting to research that. Identify some best practices in academic career planning. Kind of collect, look, looking to collaborate to integrate gateway certifications and technical diplomas and career pathways. I met with Mr. Keel about, I don't know, a month ago and I just said to him, I said, you know, I, I didn't know that we could leverage some of our, um, transcripted courses to give kids at the high school, because we're so close, a technical diploma. I mean, in the autos area, if Mr. Thorson gets two classes transcribed and the kids, you know, take those courses and maybe one course at Gateway, they're going to graduate high school with a technical diploma. I said, Dan, I'm not, Mr. Keel, I'm not sharing that with you because it was something I never did, I'm telling you right now, I didn't, it wasn't something I was aware of until I got his position. So doing that with more, I mean, there's a ton of opportunities in business, we're close, culinary, we're close, machining and fabrication, we're close. Um, so it's pretty cool, building construction, we're close. So a lot around those local labor market data that says these are the industries that we can do that with. Um, that was Keystone. And then research education for employment plans, really, which I gave you a link to one, is just going to bring our plan together and say, here's what it is, so then we can share with parents. So when a question does come up in the community or front somebody and says, what's your plan for getting kids, uh, from, move from education to employment, here's what it looks like. Last slide, Jason. And then kind of future action and movement, packaging, systemic development of the youth build, uh, development skills curriculum, span partnerships, research, research and collaboration to develop the graduate profile, I think that's something that all of us could really get excited about, that would be powerful for our community and schools. Um, continue to expand marketing and branding and then collaboratively develop that education for employment. I think that's where I'm at in October twelve. So, yeah, well, um, really good stuff there, I think one of the best things I did was I started calling people and asking a lot of questions of what they did. And I'm looking forward to, uh, really leveraging partnerships that we've had, but we just couldn't get time to, because we have to ban them. So able to call Milwaukee Tech Hub and say, hey, can we get involved? Yes, return back, M seven, can we get deep, you know, involved, um, and do deeper dives? So I think it's just good for kids and I think having a position like this is really living our values for what we believe is important for our kids. Jason said ten to fifteen minutes. What I do. Okay, go ahead.
I, I ran into someone here, I think it was probably the schoolwork association, who was involved in trades in the Milwaukee area. And he said that they have, you know, weekends, like last year, so I've known COVID's different, but they have programs that they ran every weekend for students, so it's another thing we might want to check out.
If you have a contact or send it my way.
It's been a year, so.
There's a lot out there that we could leverage, one of the challenges is, and he, and myself, Mrs. Paula, had like, we've been at M seven and others have been at M seven meetings, you know, Walworth County is part of M seven, which is a surrounding counties, but so much of that energy and focus disease.
Right.
Disease.
This was.
And, and like, talking to the Big Step program, they would love to come out here and partner up, but they're really focused on the city of Milwaukee, the city of Racine, the city of Kenosha, so, um, yeah, I mean, we'll keep making those contacts.
I, I think, um, a lot of what, we have a lot of infrastructure, a lot of opportunities for the kids and the families, I think part of what we need to do, we haven't had the panel with, is to really develop that communication, that awareness and help, you know, to be frank, change some of those perceptions that are out there.
Yeah.
In regards to what future ready looks like. I mean, Milwaukee, they have a great graduate profile, we met them out at the youth apprenticeship, um, event that I went with, um, joined a panel with, I went with, uh, Dr. Albright too out in Washington DC. And, you know, they're the second, they're probably the second best district in the state, um, in, in that aspect of the student involvement and the numbers behind us, but they have a better, their packaging, their marketing, how that's such a communication. They're relevant on that and I, I think helping communicate that to some of our, our families is, you know, really crucial and critical. So I'm, I'm excited to have Chris in that position where we can do a better job of getting that word out and I think that will expand. Because it is, it's a lot of work to set up like that Saturday programming. You know, if we don't have a dozen or so kids willing to, to go and do that and get up there, but, um, even like that from youth build, you know, ten seats, they thought, oh, that'll be no problem at all, we're not a full. So we're at nine right now?
Yeah.
Yeah, and, and we're very flexible in the timeline to get the kids in there. So I, I think, I'd love to have that problem, kind of like what, um, Mrs. Ray pointed out, what are we doing, we hit that hundred and fifty cap? Because I, I think we will get there.
Yeah.
Because everyone, whenever I talked or were able to share a story, people, oh, well, that makes a lot of sense, but it is a shift, it's a, it's a whole.
That's why when I saw that graduate profile, I kind of jumped on it because thinking back to just being a principal for sixteen years and having conversations. Well, my kid, you know, we would literally like launch an opportunity for a family and I hear, well, my kid's going to college, it doesn't apply. Then you launch another opportunity for, for kids and then you come and says, well, my kids, you know, the op, you know, going into another, go to the trade, you know, it's just, it was just always like this or, or, or it doesn't apply, when it all applies. When it all applies, and that's just, just kind of a passion that mine and I know for our district, we just got to move up, so.
Thank you.
You're welcome, thank you.
Alright, options renovation, please. They've been hard at work out there, this is the, um, I would share this document with you, Bill and Paul, feel free to time in, let me blow this up a little bit. Hey, the interior demolition is, demolition is mostly completed, um, we'll get to look at some of the, I'll just go through the images, this, the parking lots have been grounded and they're better shit now than they were pre-grounded. They, they did look like Chili's parking lot, so this is a side note, I don't know why Chili's during COVID didn't fix their parking lot, but whatever. Um, yeah, so ours no longer looks like Chili's parking lot, it's grounded and it's, um, smooth, but it's, you know, just the base there. Um, the, we will have a new pickup and drop off project at the front, the word of Jackson, so the front will look slightly different. You know, they're saving the trees and the plants as much as they can around that design. Um, this is on the backside of the school, um, the drive that's going through that way. And again, we're creating a corridor access on the backside so the kids don't have to walk through the gym to get back to the playground, which is hard on the. So this is the opening for the newer entrance to the school.
Is that over the, the basement that, well, no stairs, that's not, okay.
Wait, this does look like that.
That's what it looks like.
Yeah.
The stairwell.
Yeah.
Yeah, so the entrance is right over the top and I know we're failing the, they're modifying that. I mean, there's still going to be an access from the second level, um, I believe, and then some of that's going to get filled, I know it's a favorite peanut place of someone. The abatement work is, um, they did a really, it looks like a really nice job with it, it's really gutted, it looks like Westside Elementary.
So we're getting rid of the, the ceiling?
What?
We're getting rid of the ceiling?
No, we got rid of the spray ceiling.
Yeah, yeah, we did.
That's all.
See, you know, I've always had a problem with that.
I know, that's why we got rid of the bar. Well, we're going to call the bar, because you're spewing.
I like that, I like that.
Yeah, it's all got it, it's all, all, yeah. The ceiling, well, one of the asbestos, the spray stuff that collected all that gross dirt, covered the old pieces.
What you see when you walk in there now is really the roof decking.
Right, yeah, okay. Well, you can still, yeah, but I'm, I'm very, very pleased with that.
Yeah. Um, yep, so that's all I'll take care of, this was the bathroom.
That will be nice too. Well, she does the voice.
Yeah. This is the locker room that's been gutted, I mean, really, the whole building's been gutted down to the, to the.
So did we take out the office and are we redoing that?
There is a slight design change to this front office area, there will be, that has not been blown out yet or.
Okay.
Modified, but for the most part, the bones of the building were good.
Okay.
It was just gutting everything down.
I'm happy.
Where are you with the, to be able to handle this?
Um, we have, right now, we're, what's the dollar figure that we're projecting?
Well, I think at this point, they're still finishing up site work and what we're finding, probably the biggest surprise, which isn't huge surprise, is dealing with the site because the soils are hard.
Right.
So I think we're still, probably it'd be a month away, I think, before we have a better idea of how final costs will be and then I think we can go from there, but.
We, we've upgraded, upsized the boilers, putting in the piping, planning for. That to be a possibility, yeah. And we're still the, the dollar amount, looking at it, at least two should be a possibility, probably not four, but, but definitely two should be good enough. And with them having six hundred kids now, I, um, yeah, the additional space for the additional teachers needed. Any other questions or anything to add to that update, Paul?
No, they're doing a great job and they found a few minor things and they've had resolution for it and doing a great job.
Um, yeah, both the CG Schmidt have been great to work with and Kehoe and Henry have done a great job as, as well, they're really knowledgeable about the building, so.
It's nice when you have an architect who went to school there. Ownership.
Well, and it's good to keep it alive in our community, I think it means a lot to this community and actually bring it back to real life, because it's great.
Yeah. Alright, so, do you want to share the enrollment? Sorry. Bill, do you want to share this?
Sure, this is, uh, as you know, we do two kind of official count dates, we do a September third Friday, then the second Friday of January, that September is probably the, the most important because that really factors into finalizing our budget and revenue cap, so. The numbers you see there, um, are, are organized by each site or major program area and then you'll see the numbers, um, for residents, students, and then the non-resident is the open enrollment cap. So the combination of those then give you kind of the head count for each of the school sites. Overall, if you were to compare this report to last September, we're up, I think, seventy-two in terms of head count from last year.
No, I pulled, I pulled out last year's and I had thirty-five eighty-eight for last year.
There's which number in terms of, uh, January or the, the September one?
September.
I'll have to look back on that.
Because I, I, I wrote down, I compared the two, because the other one I couldn't, I couldn't print out this year's, I could only print out last year, so I hand rolled them in there.
There's, there's three different counts that we do though, we do, we do the head count, we do the membership and then we do the FTE calculation.
This was October fourteenth, so I'm assuming that's, well, it says enrollment for third Friday of September. Twenty nineteen, twenty twenty.
Okay, what number do you have there?
Oh, it says, this is a head count of students attending, so is this not the head?
No, this is head count, I think you're looking at both the same.
Yeah, it's third Friday in September. So my, my total number, but I don't know if that makes a difference though, because you say options virtual, now in here we have options and obviously it's really increased this year.
Right.
But I had thirty-five eighty-eight for last, wait a minute, wait a minute, wait a minute, wait a minute.
That seems awful high.
Is that, what is this year?
That's this year. Thirty-five eighty-eight this year.
Oh, okay, it was thirty-five sixteen last year, I'm reading the wrong number, sorry. Yeah, yeah. I had thirty-five sixteen. Got it, so I wrote last year and I shouldn't have written last year.
Alright.
This year, so we are up.
Yeah, so we'll do a count again in, in January, but the businesses were, were up overall. At the individual buildings, you'll see some of those are actually down from what last year's are, but the difference is in the options program.
Right, that's, yeah, because that increased so much.
Yep.
Now, last year we just called it options and now we're calling it options virtual, but we're, we're looking at the same, same category when we're. Now, last year, we just called it options and now we're calling it options virtual. But we're, we're looking at the same, same category when we're comparing those numbers. Although there's a lot more virtual this year. I mean, it's the same.
I mean, it's always been options virtual charter school. I just get lazy and call it options, but it's.
Okay.
It's, it's always the same.
I assume.
I think that, yeah.
The charter, it's a virtual charter school, but it's really, that's why we kind of refer to it more just options, because there's so much blended learning.
Sure.
And we don't want to give people necessarily the impression that it's online only, but in order to do online only, you have to be a virtual charter school.
Okay. All right.
So technically, they are a virtual charter that does a lot of face-to-face.
And then last year, I think the career college academy would have been the alternative high school.
Right, yeah. And I figured that one out.
I mean, it's a good question. Maybe we can have Tricia talk about that when she does her directory report in regards to, are they seeing more or a higher percentage doing online only? Um, I know that there's still, there's just not a substitute for getting those kids in for that face-to-face tutoring and that, that type work. So the study sessions, having the kids come in when they're stuck or having that regular contact. So they really work to try to do that. Uh, all right. Any other questions on the enrollment?
Yeah.
Yeah.
Please. I wanted to share before kind of an update of where we're at with the 2020, 21 district budget. This is kind of the highlight section is what I updated. There's, there's always three pieces of information we have to wait for in October. Uh, the valuation for the school district, our student counts, and then our state aids. We know two of, three of those right now. So, um, the other piece is what's going on, but just later, and how will that affect our budget? And the legislative fiscal bureau came out before in August that was more optimistic in terms of state finances. So it seems very unlikely that any changes will occur during this year in terms of state budget that would affect public education. Going forward to next year and the year after that, we, we really have no idea after this next year. So a lot of the assumptions we had in terms of some potential changes, um, in the budget, we really are not assuming any of those would, would, you know, come, come to play at, at this stage in the year. Um, so that's why you seem kind of crossed out. The, uh, enrollment numbers, you'll see kind of, there's a combination there. Our resident membership actually went down. And, and part of that is just fewer resident students and then also fewer in our summer school program. So the combination of those resulted in a reduction, but our open enrollment is up 113. So that's pretty good. That net kind of that 72 as a combination. When I spoke with a number of business officials across the state, just about every district had reductions in their resident students. And then no one's really sure exactly why that is. People have different theories on that. So we haven't had a chance to really look in that. But, um, the combination again is a positive number, which is a good sign for the school district.
Our, our principals, I, I have to say, have been doing a good job of following up with the families who aren't enrolled in any of the programs. Um, in Wisconsin, we have the most flexible homeschooling laws amongst the most flexible in the entire country. Where a family, all they have to do is tell the school leadership verbally that, yeah, we're homeschooling. And they don't have to enroll the kids. There's no verification of education or instruction. And by October 15th, there's a one-page document that they have to sign and churn in. And that's all they're legally required to do to homeschool. So we don't have, I don't think we're missing a lot through that avenue because they followed up. We've done some wellness checks on families that didn't return our calls and speak with us. So we've, they're pretty vigilant like that. It's not like some of the other urban areas where, um, they have 3,000 plus kids who haven't even engaged in school at all over in NPS. And I think Inocia was missing 1,000 or some of the other districts where, you know, it's very high numbers. So we're not in that situation. We're small enough for the principals to understand themselves.
Does that form determine to DBI or to what?
Uh, I believe it goes to DBI, but we get a notice on that.
Oh, okay, okay.
Yeah. So if they, when I had parents turn into me before I forwarded that form, but it's one that they can just fill out online and.
Okay.
So in terms of budget reduction, savings, additional revenue, you'll see the change there to reflect the, the additional open enrollment. Originally, we're looking at 40, then I think we talked about 90, and now we're about that, that 113. And to be honest with you, I think if we asked Jody with the numbers today, it probably would be different than 113. So, um, and the CARES Act funding that comes to the federal government, we concluded that as part of our budget. We're also going to get a small, um, grant through the CISA. I think it's a little over $4,000. Barb, thank you for sharing that. That we can use for COVID-related expenses too. So that'll get added in. Then in terms of staffing, um, the major changes, you kind of go down through. Uh, we added, obviously, athletic director position at the high school. Additional option instructional staff under the district-wide component. And then you keep going down, Jason, you'll see. And then we've got, um, the new position, um, for the director of school, the work opportunities, additional computer specialists. I think we talked about that at the last board meeting. And then COVID expenses, one-time cost. And you're going to see kind of at the, kind of the end of our, our budget, that we don't have a match in terms of revenues and expenditures. And the reason for that is those COVID expenses. Um, so we have some funding from the federal government that offsets that, but you'll see the difference kind of in that area. I think our expenditures to date right now is about $600,000. So when you think of just replenishing supplies and things like that, that's kind of where we put that finger at this point.
We need the second round of the stimulus to come through and the first round was 257. And the talk is that it's larger and we'll have more money for states and schools. That's what they've been chattering about for some time. But yeah, if we don't get it, it definitely. For us, we're much greater than the federal stimulus to cover the COVID. And my concern, like I said, a lot of the studies, it's not like it's going to go away and we're going to have to all of a sudden be free of having to restock and cover.
General fund, I have nights. Um, obviously, the decisions were made earlier in terms of adjustment for wages to that one and a half percent that's been built in the budget. The items you'll see below that, that are in purple, are still subject to change, um, because that has to do with the state aid figures. So we'll know for sure on the 15th, we're supposed to get our certified equalization aid. That was a little conservative with the number that's in here. I think it may be even a little higher than that, which will actually have a positive effect on the tax levy. So we're, we're, it looks like we're going to see about a seven and a half percent increase in, uh, equalization aid. That will have an effect of, of actually showing a levy which would be less than what was approved at the annual meeting. So that would be, I think at the annual meeting, we're looking about 2.68%. Project would be like 1.9. 5% or 398,018. Actual decrease in the general fund levy. The proposal includes putting some additional monies in our debt service to use for future refinancing. We're going to have an opportunity in the next couple of years to do some refinancing. They call it debt, uh, the fees. So it could be either used to pay off the debt or a portion of that or refinance the whole debt or do a combination of those. Our equal, or our property values are going up over 6.34%,
Right.
which is a pretty large increase. So.
Because there's wars. I mean, every time you put a house up, it's, it's a war.
Yeah, it's based on market.
Yeah. That's a stellar market for sure.
So if you think about it, when we get this, uh, October figure, it's based on January of 19 to January of 20. So what's going on currently isn't even reflected in there yet.
But even last year, but I think it's higher now.
So, so it looks like our, our tax rate will actually be going down as well.
That would be good.
So, a-again, we don't have final numbers in those purple areas, but we'll know, um, later this week.
Okay.
What the state aids will look like. And then those other sheets, I think you've seen those before, um, but you'll see the offset. I mean, technically, we, we would be operating a mismatch between revenues and expenditures, but we do have, I think it's more than sufficient fund balance that can be accommodated. So, um, it's just kind of an unusual year in terms of how revenues and expenses are working out and everything else.
Um, the COVID-19 expenses, the one-time $700,000, do you have a breakdown of that anywhere? Or can you clarify roughly how that consists of, whether it's furniture or supplies?
Yes. Yeah. I mean, I can give you probably a, a better breakdown, but furniture would be probably $200,000. Sanitizer, um, just hand sanitizer was $66,000. And then all the PPE equipment supplies. So right now, if I ran the report, I think I mentioned, it would probably be about $600,000. So we're assuming probably another $100,000 to get us through the school year.
A lot, a lot of those expenses are really, they're, they're truly gone. You know, like the furniture staying, but the hand sanitizer and all that, that's just utilized, right?
Correct. Yes, the, the face shields. I mean, we ordered enough shield replacements. I, I hope it gets us through the year. But there, there are certain things that we may have to, but we have four weeks left.
I mean, the, the only good thing is we're assuming that these are one-time.
Yeah.
Yeah.
I agree that they are. Absolutely. Thank you.
Any other questions on the budget update? We, we were shocked when the fiscal bureau came out and said that the revenues for the state were actually ahead of what they projected.
Everybody's staying home and spending the money here.
When we look at that.
All the sales tax on the PPE.
Yeah.
I was thinking that number would be a lot higher. We're, no, it was fortunate, but we're going to go with it. And that's why we don't make the statistics.
Are we good for the COVID update?
Yeah.
All right. I'll share with you the coming dashboard again. We have stayed really consistent. Between, we're, we're still in that moderate range. Below 10 is the, the low range. We stayed moderate in every single week we did report. Um, this is how our overall area is doing. The numbers countywide have dropped back down into the, where they had been staying most of the summer. Pre-Whitewater, getting back into school, um, where it's around low 40s, mid 30s to low 40s, two to three people in the hospital. We have in our county a capacity of 52 people in the hospital system. So we haven't gotten close in Walworth County to straining the, the hospital, the medical system. Um, so this is the different area based on that case rate for 10,000. This chart is going to change through creating a digital hub that will be available on their website, but they'll update every, uh, twice a week. So that people can look and see how basically similar information for all the districts in the area. I did ask, um, again, you can ignore Burlington because they're using the population of the entire Burlington district, but only counting the little lull or sliver for the cases. So I told you, you might as well just.
I was wondering.
Either don't report it or only report it in relation to the number of people that live.
Yeah.
Within that Burlington district.
And who has this report? The county?
This is the county who creates it for the school superintendent.
Okay.
Yeah. So, oh, that sounds like we're burning a little hot there. This is our, since they started issuing these reports, so we stayed pretty consistent there. And I would say that's what we've seen in our experience within the district. It's, uh, you know, often usually somewhere between one to four active, um, cases. Uh, we, you know, had some drop off, but again, these are our numbers and, um, available and. Take a look at those as you get along.
Our link, my link, I can't get into it. I'm not given permission.
You can't? Are you on any of your district accounts?
Yeah, I wasn't given permission.
All right, try that now. Sorry about that.
Yep, it's coming up. What, now, now it can.
Okay.
Thank you.
And we did update, I believe, since our last school board meeting, uh, we created a dashboard for ourselves. You can always access that on our COVID page. Um, also, yeah, that's right. We, while we have a number of people still quarantined, we no longer have any active isolated home COVID cases of students. They're all past that 10-day. Yes, not coming with, I mean, tomorrow might. But, you know, at this point, we're good in that aspect. No active positive cases isolated at home. I'll share the WebIOC also created a dashboard, which I commend sharing these meetings since it doesn't, um, carry student data. So this gives you an idea of what we look at within WebIOC without seeing all the names. So we have a total of 53 individuals that we're monitoring right now. So the people we monitor is anyone who, um, went home sick with COVID-like symptoms. Um, it's anyone who has been quarantined due to unknown exposure. So we monitor those individuals. We do regular phone calls and follow-ups. Of those 53, and that's out of 4,300 in our system, so staff, students, all of anyone in our database. Uh, so not monitoring, you know, you subtract the 53 from there. Of those 53, 12 are symptomatic. Those are likely the individuals who, um, went home with COVID-like symptoms over the past, um, week or so. And then it also reports, uh, whether, you know, how, how many of them have, uh, tested. So of the 53, um, 15 total have been tested, nine have come back negative. We're still waiting to hear about that. So it gives kind of that overall breakdown of where that's at. And that's been working out quite well for us. Sent to homes really takes charge and handles the bulk of the follow-up calls. And the teams are getting really good at the contact tracing. Um, the parents are very understanding and, uh, appreciative. No one likes to quarantine. I, I feel bad. We really feel bad for the kids, especially those that are, you know, at the high school level and they're involved in the curriculum. You know, there's some tears shed when they get that call and they have to miss for 10 days. But, um, all in all, it's run pretty well. Any other questions on the COVID? All right. Uh, the policy committee met in regards to, uh, the, all the policies related to seclusion and physical restraint. Some of the state statutes have recently changed. And so they, uh, Rita worked with legal counsel to combine all of these old policies and exhibits into one new one and with a proposal to delete the other four. So, um, the first one is there for your review. I think the easiest, because it's a new policy that captures all the components from the old ones plus the new statutes, is if there's any questions, um, I know Rita's on, we can have her speak to it. Otherwise, this is here for the first reading and you can always review it again prior to this.
I do have a question. It talks about mandatory training. Um, I, I'm assuming that has to be renewed. How often? And like, is the training online? How do we do that?
So, great question, Barb. The training is done by our school psychologists and they follow what is called nonviolent crisis intervention, um, through the Crisis Prevention Institute. And, um, we keep track of whoever takes that training. Our school psychologists keep track of that. They give updates yearly to people and renew, um, the certification every two years for individuals. Um, they give updates yearly to people and renew la, um, the certification every two years for individuals. And, um, we have had in-person training in the past. We now have gone, uh, during COVID to, uh, what are called a flex training. And these are modules that the staff can complete, and then they can still ask the school psychologists, uh, for any questions, uh, that they have.
And did CPI give some waivers on the physical training, the physical techniques, Rita, or is it just reviewing them by video is fine?
They did not give any waivers on the physical training right now. I see Chris Kolasmo is on. Chris, do you want to comment at all?
Uh, I guess the only thing that I would comment on is, um, uh, CPI is, is saying, they're staying with their original comments that in order for somebody to be fully trained in non-verbal, or sorry, non-violent crisis intervention, they have to go through the full training. Uh, we've done bridge trainings, which would be more of the verbal interactions and verbal intera, interventions for students. Um, so once we have the approval to be able to do in-person trainings and work on, um, uh, techniques, uh, physical techniques and physical interventions, then we'll continue on with the training for all of our staff. But, uh, as of right now, the staff that are being trained and the staff that are being renewed are only, uh, being renewed with the, uh, non-verbal, uh, interventions. Or sorry, the verbal intervention, verbal intervention.
Do we have the U.S. people that have to have that physical training, and they're okay right now with COVID, are we doing it?
Well, the staff that, in every school, there's staff that is trained and are certified right now, so we should be fine. Um, and we have only a few individuals who do, or are in a position right now where they're having to do any physical, um, intervention. It's very few and far between right now. Any other questions?
Okay, thank you very much. Alright, have a number of personnel recommendations? Okay, um, first is a resignation of Olivia May as a high school assistant, a girl's high school assistant soccer coach. Um, I want to thank Olivia for for her service. We also have the appointment of Dashmir Ademi, uh, as a teaching assistant at Jackson Elementary. An appointment of Lorraine Rodriguez as a custodian at Jackson. Um, Ariad Lopez Garcia is a teaching assistant at Tivitz. And the appointment of Rebecca Reed as a, um, special education teaching assistant at the middle school. Laura Medley as a high school avid tutor. Lawrence Orlando as a bus aide. And that is all we have of them.
You didn't mention Liam.
Liam Holman, Holman. It's a top one.
Oh, sorry. I wonder why I jumped to the other one. Uh, Liam Holman as a Westside historian.
Questions, Alis?
I moved to approve personal recommendation sheet for October twelfth, twenty twenty, including new employment contracts. Condition upon passing the background check in district management, maybe drug screening as presented.
Is there a second?
I'll second it.
So moved a second to approve the personal recommendation sheet for October twelfth, twenty twenty, including new employment contract. Condition upon passing the background check in district management, drug screening. As presented for public.
Mrs. Fisher?
Yes.
Mr. Gayheart?
Yes.
Mrs. Ingersoll?
Yes.
Mr. Martel?
Yes.
Mr. O'Donnell?
Yes.
Mrs. Ray?
Yeah.
Mr. Scarrow?
Yes.
Uh, Ms. Grakowski?
Yes.
And Ms. Reed?
Yes.
Motion carries.
Alright, the Westside PTA has donated three hundred dollars each to the classrooms of Penny Cruz, Leah Oldley, and a hundred and fifty dollars each to the classrooms of Christie Flood and Liz Foxroy for the purchase of supplies. And this is something they do traditionally for new teachers, um, for their classrooms, or new to position shifts in the case of, uh, Mrs. Flood and Liz Foxroy.
Will we thank them? For motion approval, please.
I moved to approve generous gifts as presented.
Is there a second?
Second.
Moved a second in to approve generous gifts, the Westside PTA as presented.
Mrs. Fisher?
Yes.
Mr. Gayheart?
Yes.
Mrs. Ingersoll?
Yes.
Mr. Martel?
Yes.
Mr. O'Donnell?
Yes.
Mrs. Ray?
Yeah.
Mr. Scarrow?
Yes.
Ms. Grakowski?
Yes.
And Ms. Reed?
Yes.
Motion carried, announcements.
Um, I do not have anyone else.
I do have a question.
Yes.
Um, and it may be a little bit early, but I had someone ask me about the Veterans Day program. Do you know if they're looking at alternative programs, and if they're doing anything this year, anybody?
Uh, yes, we are, they are trying to put together, um, or not trying to, they're putting together a virtual program that they can share. Um, they're working on, but they really want to give the veterans, like, the breakfasts and so forth, and I know they're just worried that I just, I, I didn't feel it would be a good idea, not for our own sake, but I don't want to bring in too much veterans who are many of them vulnerable into the building, and then run the risk of having an outbreak in, in that community. So we're looking at, uh, possibly like a, a grab and go and delivering kind of like Meals on Wheels or something along those lines to get them the breakfast and recognition, so. We're putting some plans together, and, um, I know the schools, and they always do a great job with veterans, right? So it, it won't look the same, but, um, hopefully, they'll, they'll recognize and appreciate it nonetheless. Good question.
Jason, would you mind introducing our new student representative to us?
Yes, well, I will introduce, Mr. Toby Reed was selected, I think they had eight, was it eight? No. How many applicants, it was a competitive pool. They, uh, interviewed for, he was selected to, to serve as the, um, student school board rep. Uh, Toby, would you like to add anything, or tell the school board about yourself?
Um, well, hello, my name is Toby Reed, I'm a senior at our high school. Uh, I'm currently in both our soccer and basketball versus the athletic program.
Nice.
And I'm excited to be here, I was a bit nervous, but I got a lot more used to it.
So what are your, what are you planning? Like, what you're gonna answer?
So I'm currently planning on going to a four-year university, I'm not entirely sure where exactly yet. And I'd like to potentially major in biochemistry and go into the positions assistance school.
Oh, wow. Have you been involved in any of our extracurricular besides sports?
Uh, yes, I've been involved in our student council, post, uh, forensic, DECA, and peer tutoring.
Alright, great. Nice to meet you.
Nice to meet you.
And Ms. Reed, you get to do the student report next time, so.
Can I get a motion adjourned?
Yeah, I'll smooth.
Barb, you're so fast, I don't know which one.
I've got yours as a second. Uh, Mrs. Fisher?
Yes.
Mr. Gayheart?
Yes.
Mrs. Ingersoll?
Yes.
Mr. Martel?
Yes.
Mr. O'Donnell?
Yes.
Mrs. Ray?
Yes.
Mr. Scarrow?
Yes.
Ms. Grakowski?
Yes.
And Mr. Reed?
Yes.
I hope you're not just around those for free.